I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you can, please stand and say the pledge.
Welcome leaders to the land of the United States of America. To the republic which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is hearing on the proposed superintendent contract. Dr. Roach?
The superintendent's contract has been posted online and the summary was posted in the Muncie newspaper. The contract is for October 13th through June 30th, October 13th, 2025 through June 30th of 2028. A 260-day contract. It prorated this year to 187 days, which are the number of weekdays between now or between October 13th and June 30th, at an amount of $145,000 per year.
So that's open for questions, comments. Not hearing any. We'll move on to consideration of the proposed superintendent contract. So we must get going. Adjourn. Adjourn this one? Okay. This first part of the meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to the additional appropriation hearing. Dr. Roach, could you please summarize the additional appropriation resolution?
Yeah, the additional appropriation resolution provides for the approval of the school corporation to appropriate funds for the proposed project in the same year of our general obligation bonds for addition.
And it's your recommendation that we approve the resolution?
Yes, I would recommend that. That's for the Geo bond. It's going to be from a range of $300,000 to $600,000. And I talked about it previously with our debt service funds. We have excess funds in there that we can spend down and have a one-year general obligation bond. I'd recommend approval, please.
All right. Could I have? You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the additional appropriation resolution? Madam President? Yes, Mrs. Horn. I salute. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Call second.
Thank you. This is Anthony. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Vicki Reese?
Yes.
Kip Corn?
Yes.
Ron Hubbard Jr.?
Yes.
Kathy Anthony?
Yes.
All right. All right. We're moving on to the final bond resolution for the Geo bonds.
Yeah, the final bond resolution contains the project cost, maximum interest rate, and other financial terms, such as the first interest payment date and maturity dates of all the bonds, all with respect to the issuance of a general obligation bond. This resolution also approves the registrar and paying agent for the repayment of the bond. Approve of that, please.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the final bond resolution as presented to us. Could I have a motion and a second to the final bond resolution for the Geo bonds? Madam President? Yes, Mrs. Reese? I'm. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Vicki Reese?
Yes.
Kip Corn?
Yes.
Kathy Anthony?
Yes.
Ron Hubbard Jr.?
Yes.
Right. Yes. All right. Do you want to summarize the projects to be funded by the Geo bonds? Don't skip that. Yeah, I missed it up. So that meeting is now adjourned. So we'll move on to a regular meeting? All right. So we have welcomed everybody. We've done the pledge. So we are going to review and approve the review and approval of the agenda. Dr. Roach, are there any changes?
There are no changes. I recommend the agenda be approved as presented, please.
Which includes the consent agenda, which includes review and approval of accounts payable voucher listings, review and approval of the minutes of the regular session on August 25th, 2025, review and approval of the minutes of the executive session on August 25th, 2025, review and approval of the minutes of the executive session of September 2nd, 2025, review and approval of the minutes of the executive session on September 3rd, 2025, review and approval of the minutes of the executive session on September 4th, 2025, and review and approval of the minutes of the special session on September 23rd, 2025, special session meeting minutes 9:23, 2025. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Not hearing any. I'll assume there's consensus and move on. And we'll do the spotlight recognition.
All right. So for our spotlight, so we, for elementary or athletics, we don't have a lot of athletics. We've kind of just started. But that off-season, that summertime, we have so many kids involved and feel like that really helps round who the students are. They get involved in those extra activities. So we wanted to highlight three students that have really put in a lot of work to their passion, their craft over the summer. And our first one is Harlan Keffer. Come on up. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you were state runner-up in freestyle and finished fourth in folk style. Is that right? Good work. Next, we had Damasio Basinger. He is at wrestling tonight, but he was folk style and freestyle state champion and a national runner-up in folk style. And next, we have Paisley Harvey. So if you get up here, you can guess. She's been in rodeos since she was three. She's a member of the National Little Bridges Rodeo Association. They have a national event every year. You have to qualify based on your speed and you need six, top six runs in each event in order to qualify. She qualified for the Nationals in Guthrie, Oklahoma this summer. She qualified in barrel racing, pole bending, and goat tail untie. Right? All right. This year, she's already started off and she has qualifying times already that will get her to Nationals as well. And lastly, she finished 58 in the world in the barrel racing. And no goats were hurt, right?
It's a long drive to Guthrie, Oklahoma.
13 hours, is it?
I know. My family's from Oklahoma.
Good evening. Tonight, this meeting is the second meeting in a row we're able to recognize a student group in junior, senior high school. Beginning of the year, we talked about connecting with the students, challenging them, and celebrating those successes. We appreciate the board bringing them in to celebrate this success. It's with great pleasure. We recognize the Daleville Unified Band members. It's a unified band that we partner with Talon, Unified Marching Band, who were awarded Class A champions at the Indiana State Fair Band Day under the outstanding leadership of Ms. Carter. She gives her regrets. She's not able to be here tonight, but she sends her regards. Their hard work, dedication, and talent have truly paid off as they brought home several prestigious awards. I'll name a few here. They were Class A champions. Best percussion, best visual. Out of all the bands, even the ones that came in semis and truckloads of equipment, they placed 18 overall. So it was an outstanding day and the preparation, they worked hard all summer. Appreciate Mr. Reese opened up the elementary and their hard work and dedication definitely paid off. So we'd like to recognize them tonight. If I call your name, you join us up here and come get your certificate. Thank you. Adeline Wild. Grant Campbell. Alan Stitt. Randy Matthews. Abadah. Adazo Harper. Abel Weymeyer. Josie Cruz. Carson Paxton. Ari Gormly. Logan Chuzel. Avery Brady. Andrew. Candy Pow. And Dangy Awakefield.
Probably have to scooch in a little bit.
Anybody want to describe how it went?
Uh, this was my first summer doing marching band and it was incredibly hard. There was a lot of days I did not want to get up and go out and practice on the blacktop. But at the end of the year, when we were out getting our awards at State Fair Band Day, that was probably the best day of my life with my team, getting our awards, getting to celebrate with everybody. Even though we didn't make 316, which was our goal, I'm still, I still think we had a great summer.
If you would like to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. If you would like to exit, you're more than welcome to exit.
See ya. Thank you.
How much savage?
See ya.
There were no changes to the agenda. The agenda was a first. We've got reports on the schools.
So our budget mini audit's been completed. Our enrollment, as of today, we actually have four more students. So we gained four students the past two days, which I think is higher than we were last year this time. Really a shout-out to our special education teacher, really in the whole district. But so Power School, we used to have Indiana IEP where all of their paperwork was. I thought it worked very smoothly. Teachers understood it. They switched to a new program called Power School Special Programs. And the state thought it would be really smooth transition and nothing really transferred into the new program. So like every IEP, they basically are recreating and cutting and pasting. And there's some frustration, but they're, they've just been awesome. It hasn't been, hey, let's complain about it. It's been, hey, let's just figure it out. So really impressed with them. There's a lot of paperwork in special ed. So they've had a positive mindset. And Scotty kind of leads that crew, so that's going well. Something new, we started this year, Compass Weekly Lessons. We have the PBIS for our incentives in our positive store we have on Thursday. We were looking at what is a proactive piece. And Compass, which is through our Navigate 360, has lessons each week and they watch a short video on Monday and then there are skills each day to talk about. For instance, one of them was using your shield. And it talked about when you have a challenging situation, how you think about your options, how you take breathing strategy. So really trying to give students some of those tools so when they do end up in a situation that's challenging, they're like, ah, I know I can take a breath. I know I can talk to the adults. So something new this year. So we're excited to see how that impacts our culture. Ms. Crabtree has kind of spearheaded that. Our Stars has been revamped. So Stars is our, we do Vemi Stars for our math. And then we have Stars, which are high abilities students. And that's a pull-out program that last year involved all of our related arts teachers. This year, we pull out and they're keeping them for a month. So like Ms. Heitzman will have a grade level for that entire month. We were switching weekly. Hey, this week we did this. Move on to next week. And didn't feel they were able to push the students as much. And Mrs. Heitzman especially said, you know, I'm developing something and in a week I'm like, ah, I got to get rid of them. So now that it's a semester-long, they're able to do a lot more enrichment activities and push the students. So they've been pretty excited about that. We're in the middle of the Island Checkpoints. I believe we just have third grades to go. Last year, once we finished these, we manually assigned all of the skills that those students needed. And this year, it's supposed to sync with Edmentum. So a student will take the checkpoint. Their areas where they were low should then, I guess, integrate with their learning path. And then their learning paths should mirror the skills they needed from the checkpoint. So state's kind of running that as well. So I'm hoping it works better than special programs, but it should be really easy. I mean, they're going to take that data, boom, it'll dump into Edmentum, recalculate their path, and they'll be ready to go. Outdoor Learning Lab, we had a great visit. And some of you were there for that. But just props to Mrs. Shireman, Mrs. Hargrave. They were very nervous to have that many people to have to talk to, but I thought they did an awesome job. I mean, yeah, the Ball Brothers, Muncie Schools, a lot of local learning centers around here that were here. And they were all just blown away by that space out there. So it was very cool. I know they put a lot of work into getting it prepared. And then our fall sports and clubs that are up and running, volleyball, cross-country, soccer. Said it is interesting to go to soccer match and have a lot of eighth graders play our sixth graders. And like, we have some sixth graders that are this tall. And they're, they're maybe outsized, but they play hard out there. And then our clubs, STEM club is up and running. Art club, I think Mrs. H said this is the highest number of students in art club that she's had in a number of years. News club, they put on there. They produce our monthly video for students. Choir and spellbook are all up there. So it's our reports.
Right. The junior, senior high school, mini audit of Bank State Miss Frog has been completed. This Friday, we'll have a no referral party scheduled for October 3rd. It's grade seven and eight. On a shout-out to Mr. Bendis, our assistant principal. He's led this PBIS initiative. It's recognizing that achievement and that character and respect and responsibility in the classroom, around the building, during the school day, and extracurricular piece as well. We have the store where they can earn the Bronco bucks during class and purchase snacks and things at the store every three weeks. And then we, at the end of the quarter, if you haven't had one classroom referral, you're invited down for about 50 minutes of activities and things to do in the gym. And it's just a way to reinforce those high-character and doing it well during the school day pieces. So I appreciate Mr. Bendis' work with that. We have between 130, 140 students that'll be attending that. So you think of eighth grade and seventh grade, you're right around 160. So that's not, they're doing a good job. It's a nice percentage. Sergeant Keegan from the Indiana State Police came in and did a presentation on internet safety and teenage safe driving. I think it was outstanding. He speaks as, you know, obviously a state police official, but also a parent of two daughters. The walk away, you could hear students and teachers, that piece about buckling up. If anyone gets in your car and buckles up before the car moves, you hear students talking about it. At the end of the week, be safe. Buckle up when you leave. And then the internet safety piece is always just the world they live in. So being mindful of that. So we're appreciative of his time and him joining us. As Mr. Reese said, the Island Checkpoints start, we start this week and we'll work through that windows. First windows open through November. This, these Island Checkpoints, just to sum it up, they have, they have the essential skills that the students need to know for that grade level and preparation for the grade above. They also will be tested on those as a summative piece in the spring. And that's where our scores are derived from, for state accountability and school, school grades. So the piece about this is it gives you feedback and also the parents, if they want to use the portal, we've shared that information out to the parents and students so we can intervene and respond to those. If we see holes or we see deficiencies in some areas, we're able to respond in October and November before we get to April. Also, the other piece, those PD days, those e-learning days, while our students are on, live with their teachers, synchronous learning in the morning and going through their class schedule. It starts at 8:00, 11:40. The afternoon is very valuable for this because we're able to pull those teachers, look at this data, and then prepare that response during that success period we have for 22 minutes, 20-ish minutes during the day and the core instruction in the classroom, which is about 48 minutes. So looking how we're able to come back and revisit these skills for students who did get it the first time and move forward. Just because you don't get it on September 29th doesn't mean you won't get it on October 16th through 17th. So that's the goal. And we're putting the time in to build those systems this year. And hopefully, we're just fine-tuning those moving forward after this year. So the end of quarter one's already here. 25% of the year, it's hard to believe. October 3rd, this Friday. And the Purple Star School District, want to thank Mr. Reese and Mr. Joseph for this. They started this at the elementary and they helped me incorporate us into this. And now we're, we meet the criteria for the Purple Star School District. And anytime we can recognize our veterans, military, I think it's an outstanding, outstanding thing. The Restorians Club just kind of segues right into that fundraiser support, builds the flags for disabled American veterans. Our Restoring Club are students. They put on, one of my favorite programs of the year, the Veterans Day Program. And they wanted to do this fundraiser. You'll see it as part of the fundraising approval piece that comes to you monthly. This isn't them raising the money and taking the money here, but they're promoting it and driving folks towards the site for the disabled American veterans where folks can donate. So we're partnering with them to help support, support. And I think it's outstanding. That club is run by Mr. Chris and they do a nice job. Ball State, we have eight practicum students joining us. The practicum students come in from junior high to high school classes. They observe the teacher and then assist. And then they teach like a mini lesson before they leave. But it's an extra person in the room and it helps support, number one, teaching and those folks on their journey. But also helps us make connections with students who will later student teach and then be teachers themselves. So it's a nice partnership we have with Ball State. And we've had that, had that going for some time. I think eight's a high number for us this year. So glad to have those students. And they join us for about two hours a day, or two hours a visit, a couple of times a week. Enrollment, we're at 449. It's Mr. Reese said. We have, I think, we have one. We're excited to get in today. So that'll go up a little bit. And then the extracurricular piece, September 21st, we had a band concert, all band concert here in the main gym. Did an outstanding job. We had the Fall Frenzy Volleyball Tournament. We had good staff and student engagement. We had a staff team. No one got hurt. That's always a plus. And everyone walked out happy.
What is the staff like?
The staff starting, it was, I couldn't believe it. They, they put them up against an all-star team. I thought you, so the freshmen have a team, the sophomores have a team, the juniors have a team, and the seniors have a team. And they're, it's amazing. They coordinate with their jerseys and some of them are really decked out. And then the juniors? Juniors won it overall. So I said, okay, the staff's going to play the juniors, right? Oh, no. They took the best players from all the teams and put them on one side and said, here you go, staff. I mean, some folks, you know, roll. You know, so they, they did a great job. I told Mr. Bendis just to walk out there and go right into the middle of the net. But they did a good job. And the students always like to see that involvement. And, you know, when those things are earned, that, that is a fun experience. So that was great. Now we appreciate volleyball for leaving that. And then, and Ms. Dickerson and the athletic council supporting. And the girls reffing were amazing. They are matter-of-fact. I said, that's the way you call it. They did an outstanding job. So the volleyball girls reffed it and they did an outstanding job. Regional Golf Qualifier, Audrey Capes. She competed this past weekend. She did a nice job. They advanced to the regional. Saw her at the sectional. She had an eagle and that was impressive. By any stakes, she did a great job. Had a great year. The golf team in general represented well. And we were proud of them that great season. October 14th is the volleyball sectional. Cross-country sectional is October 18th. And the soccer sectional is October 6th. So we're closing out the fall sports. Just a shout-out to Mr. Hanson. He's, he's done a nice job moving things along and pushing out information and working with, working with the coaches and the student athletes. And, and the focus is, you know, the academic piece first and the athletic second. Getting here and making sure we're taking care of our responsibilities during the day. And it's, it's been, it's been a good focus and it's worked well with students are responding. So student athletes responding. So appreciate that. I will, I don't have it on here, but I'll give a shout-out. Coach Hicks here. When students or teams or coaches go above and beyond, officials give us good news report. And I usually receive that. We've had three and they've all been with volleyball. JB for helping during the tournament we hosted. The officials were just really impressed of the help they had and how cooperative our students and adults were. And then Eastern Hancock, we had a call. It didn't go right. And Maddie Reese got the team moving in the right direction. And the official said, you know, appreciated her leadership. It wasn't about the call, it was about the next play. So outstanding job to hear those things. We share them out with the coach. Send them to Dr. Roach and others because that is exactly what we want to celebrate. So. They will come to myself and Mr. Hanson.
I mean, the people, the referees?
It's the IHSA. It's the officials. And they report it out to the school. Yes.
Ready for your fund report?
Yep. We can go through the fund report. You want to click that up. Education funds, a little bit over a million dollars, a million, 29,000. As I told you, we want to try to keep that around a million and just kind of leveled out there over the last several years. The operation fund is negative 97,000. That's not unusual for September. We run that down and we use an education operations fund transfer to balance that back up and get it into positive until we get our November draw and then our December, our early draw in November and then our December draw. Rainy Day Fund's 1.1 million dollars. So that's, that's really healthy and that's a good buffer for what we need to have. All the others are in great shape. Lodge Key's around 59,000. And we spent that down a little bit. Trying to get Laurie a little bit more help if we can, Mrs. Sutton. Mrs. Sutton. So the rest of them, there's a few negatives, those are all reimbursable grants or other funds, we're waiting on reimbursement to come in, just like we always do. The cash balance, if you go down to the very end, three point one million dollars, which is really good, about twenty-five, twenty-six percent of our budget, so feel really good about where we are financially. And apparently we had four more elementary students, that's always good news right before October first, so that'll help our education fund as well, so really happy with that.
Questions? Here with me, my mouse has got its mind of its own. Okay, the personnel report's next.
Personnel report, we have two resignations, Caitlin Luprak, Latchkey at the elementary and then Molly Lee, instructional assistant at the elementary. Caitlin's was August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five is when it was effective. Molly Lee's going to be effective at the end of first semester, so December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a couple leave of absence requests, Malia Parrish at the elementary from December, that should be twenty-five to March twenty-sixth. And Bruce Waters, medical lead, starting on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. We have hiring recommendations, five of them, Damian Dickerson, maintenance custodial intern from Daleville Communities for us, effective September fifteenth. Ashton Hazelbaker, the same position, and those are two students that are at the Monty Area Career Center and I believe they're from Yorktown, so they come over and give us some custodial help and I think they're really interested in being an electrician, that's what they're studying at the MACS. We're trying to help them with that, with some guidance from Jeff, who can do the electrician stuff. So Heather Knoll, instructional assistant at the elementary, that's to be determined. Evan Edgerton, a maternity leave substitute teacher at the high school for Mrs. Basinger, effective October thirteenth, when we come back from fall break through approximately March third, twenty twenty-six. And then Christian Ford, jazz ensemble sponsor at the junior senior high school, that's for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that just didn't make it through our recommendation process, so we need to have that approved so we can pay him for that position. And those are all on the personnel report, I recommend approval as presented, please.
Any questions? Per the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve, personnel report is presented to us, do I hear a motion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Halbert?
Aye.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Anthony, motions made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Carrie? All right, so now we, yeah, the ECA.
Yeah, the ECA recommendations, elementary boys basketball coach, Cooper Sexton, elementary assistant boys basketball coach, Clay Sexton, varsity boys track coach, Dave Brand, varsity girls track coach, Lisa Calacomo, assistant varsity boys track coach, Mackenzie Parkinson, assistant girls, varsity girls track coach, J.C. Dickerson, junior high boys track coach, David Beard, and junior high girls track coach, David Beard. I'd recommend approval as presented, please.
Any questions? You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve, hirings as presented to us, do I hear a motion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Corn?
I submit.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese, motions made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Carrie? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire Mr. Jason Callahan as our new superintendent.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Welcome, Jason. All right, consideration of donations?
Yes, we have no donations this month, we have fundraisers.
Okay.
Have a lot of fundraisers turned down. We went to a Google form and they're definitely using it, which is good, makes it a lot easier to track for us. There are several, I'll list them, they're junior senior high school, the Athletic Council, Fall Frenzy Volleyball Game, that's just for Athletic Council, field trips, Unified Bowling Fundraiser and other activities that they'll do in the future, Athletic Council Boys Basketball, the Bronco Madness, which will take place on October twenty-fifth. They'll be splitting profits between Boys Basketball and Athletic Council for the expenses incurred by those teams or club. The elementary school, the student council, field day shirts for the students, profits used for the student and teacher supplies to enhance learning at the school. High school student media, selling the world's finest chocolate bars, I've had those and I believe that. Funding's going to go into the yearbook contract, replacing yearbook and news equipment. The art club at the elementary school, adult ceramic tree, adults will make ceramic trees for Christmas, it's on November eighth, profits will be used for art club activities and I think that is highly, highly attended. If I remember, I think maybe you ran out one year or something like that, so very, very popular. The DES Spirit Club in Shear, selling Daleville Bronco baskets, profits going toward Shear uniforms, palms mats, and the season awards and gifts. DHS Historians Club, they're going to register and work with a group to try to help raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, they make no money from this fundraiser, just to help the nonprofit group, the DAB, and then they'll start as soon as that's approved and they'll run it through Veterans Day. At the high school, the Athletic Council Boys Basketball is, I think that's the same one that got entered twice, that's the Bronco last, whatever, Bronco. Yeah. So then the elementary school, DES Fine Arts, bags for bucks, they'd like to sell trash bags for a fundraiser, that'll purchase art music equipment and supplies. So I would recommend approval of all of those fundraisers as presented, please.
Any questions? You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve, all the fundraisers as presented to us, do I hear a motion?
Madam President.
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Reese?
Ron Hubbard Jr.?
I submit.
Yes.
Diane?
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, the next is the public meeting on tentative collective bargaining agreement Thank you, Mrs. Corn, motions made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. with the Daleville Federation of Teachers.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Yeah, this is why a large part of our audience is sitting out there, I think, but
Carrie? So now we're at the consideration of supplemental payment for teachers who earn a master's
if you look at, we reached tentative agreement last Wednesday and the DFT ratified their side of the contract, their membership ratified the contract on Friday, so we have to have our hearing and this is a hearing only, no vote needed, but just a description of what
degree.
So this is a supplemental pay, we're using Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-eight dash it includes. You can see in red, the insurance payment has been increased, we absorbed the increase, nine dash one point five that provides for these supplemental payments and the payment we had a four percent insurance increase, which I was really happy it was that low, will be a one-time fifteen hundred dollar increase to their base salary. but for the single plans, the corporation's adding another three hundred and forty-eight They have to earn the masters prior to the start of the school year and have been with dollars to our payment and another eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for a family us the previous school year as well, so I'd recommend approval of this as presented, please. plan, so feel really good about that and be able to take that on.
Any questions? Per the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the resolution, sorry,
Going down to Article ten, remove some language that goes back to the two thousand fifteen,
for supplemental payment plan for earning a master's degree for the teachers as presented
sixteen master contract and before, because we remove, as we go down, I'll explain, this
to us, do I hear a motion?
Madam President.
was part of something that, things that we removed when we had a buyout for annuities
Yes, Mrs. Anthony?
I submit.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am, I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Halbert, motions made and seconded, Madam Secretary, would you call
and things like that a long, long time ago.
the roll, please?
We have three teachers still remaining under that, but we're not putting any funds into
Vickery?
Yes.
that, into that fund, into that fund or that annuity program anymore, so we're allowed to take it out of the contract. And then Appendix A is the salary increase for the year. Teachers who return to us will receive a one thousand five hundred dollar increase in their base compensation. And then any teacher that attained or was awarded a literacy endorsement, receive an additional one-time increase of their base salary of two hundred and fifty dollars. Also, we will increase the new hire salary schedule by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars across the board for all levels. Going on down to page four, we remove the varsity wrestling coach from level two and varsity boys wrestling and varsity girls wrestling and the two coaching positions at four thousand dollars apiece. And then if you go on down to page five, and it's about four and a half pages, I think, you see lined out, that is all that, that annuity, that buyout, all the language in there that we have. We actually get to take our contract down from about twenty-five pages to twenty pages by eliminating this, but like I said, we're not contributing any money to this anymore, so we're not required to have it in the contract. And at the very end, you can see we keep in there the retirement savings for one A annuity plan, that's where at the end of the year, June, we contribute one percent for years one through five, that they're starting with the sixth year, one point five percent of their salary into an annuity for our teachers, they're vested after five years. So that is the contract, the tentative agreement. We have a meeting scheduled on Friday at one o'clock in the superintendent's office to consider ratification of the contract. Happy to answer any questions, but there's no board action.
No action tonight. So now we're down to the Daleville Community Schools Board of Trustees' goals for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, which is to attend ten school-related events during each school year, to review the goals formally every month until they are complete, to have a hundred percent attendance at board meetings each year, to hold one or more special meetings, events, to give patrons the opportunity to meet school board members, to keep board policies current, review incorporation goals by the end of December, spotlight students, staff, volunteers, and community members, and I'm down with the good of the cause, does anyone have any?
I do. So Mrs. Corn and I had the privilege with Dr. Sieszki to sit in with the contract negotiation with the DFT and they were very complimentary of Dr. Roach again for his open style and for recent improvements in the corporation. It was a very amiable meeting and it was nice to see that kind of bittersweet for them and for some of us, but thank you for your work.
He's always been pretty good like that, usually get it done in one night.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, for everybody, it's kind of a moot night, yeah. I'm down with the cause, all right. I just want to compliment the high school, our new people that have been here at so many activities, they're, it's not unusual to see all three of them here, the A.D., the assistant principal, the principal, they're visible, they're set in the tone for what we expect, how we expect our children to, our students to behave, and I think they're, it's worked well. I'm proud of our students at the Fall Frenzy too, they handle themselves well and I love watching the boys play volleyball. Would love to see a boys volleyball team come too. All right, anything else? Diane?
I have a computer. Hello, my name is Cheyenne, I'm actually a parent of two of the kiddos at the elementary school, then I say three because my best friend's son is sixth grader and I go on his field trips and whatnot. So I do have a few questions that I'm hoping schools and school boards might be able to help with. So something that I've come across, a few parents have raised concerns about, is both schools, is it possible to have something posted on the website of what clubs, sports, everything is available per grade? Because especially if, for example, we have a lot of students coming in right now, so they weren't at back to school night or meet the teacher night, so they're not going to be aware of, okay, well, sixth grade has all of these clubs available, fourth grade has all of these, ninth grade has all of these, because we weren't at that beginning. And I've noticed, another parent brought up that there's something similar on websites, but it's in four different places and they're not matching up. So I don't know if that's something that can go out on Daleville Community Schools website or maybe the school calendar, one page is the calendar, the second page is, hey, each grade, here are the things that are available in each season. I think that would definitely help with the students getting more involved as well.
Does Miss, does our athletic director send out the, what he sends to? We receive them of the activities each week.
Right.
Does he send that out to the parents too?
I'd have to check.
I haven't seen it on.
We can definitely take a look at organizing that on the website and making that clear and differentiate by grade level and what's available, because you have some extracurricular clubs, example, film club, guitar club, and then some athletic sports that are specific to grade levels, so we'll take a look at that and we can make that out. I think you're saying if they moved in right now and they would go, ah, what's available for me?
Yes, so like, and the sixth grade I was talking about, he's about to come to the high school.
Sure.
And I helped get him to activities and whatnot, but like this year, he wasn't aware that there was soccer at the elementary schools, so they signed up through the DCFC and that would have been, like, talking to his mom, it's like, I would prefer to go to the school, because there's a lot of kids.
We have three teachers still remaining under that, but we're not putting any funds into that, into that fund, into that fund or that annuity program anymore. So we're allowed to take it out of the contract. And then Appendix A is the, the salary increase for the year. Teachers who return to us will receive a one thousand five hundred dollar increase in their base compensation. And then any teacher that attained or was awarded a literacy endorsement, I'll receive an additional one-time increase in their base salary of two hundred and fifty dollars. Also, we will increase the new higher salary schedule by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars across the board for all, all levels. Going on down to page four, we, we removed the varsity wrestling coach from level two and varsity boys wrestling and varsity girls wrestling into two coaching positions at four thousand dollars apiece. And then if you go on down to page five, and it's about four and a half pages, I think, you see lined up, that is all that, that annuity, that buyout, all the language in there that we have. We actually get to take our contract down from about twenty-five pages to twenty pages by eliminating this. But like I said, we're not contributing any money to this anymore, so we're not required to have it in the contract. And at the very end, you can see we keep in there the retirement savings for O one A annuity plan. That's where at the end of the year in June, we contribute one percent for years one through five, that they're starting with the sixth year, one point five percent of their salary into an annuity for teachers that are vested after five years. So that is the contract, the tentative agreement. We have a meeting scheduled on Friday at one o'clock in the superintendent's office to consider ratification of the contract. Happy to answer any questions, but there's no board action.
No action tonight. So now we're down to the Daleville Community Schools Board of Trustees' goals for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, which is to attend ten school-related events during each school year, to review the goals formally every month until they are complete, to have a hundred percent attendance at board meetings each year, to hold one or more special meetings, events, to give patrons the opportunity to meet school board members, to keep board policies current, review incorporation goals by the end of December, spotlight students, staff, volunteers, and community members. And down with the good of the cause. Does anyone have any for the good of the cause?
I do.
Okay.
So Mrs. Corn and I had the privilege with Dr. Sieszki to sit in with the contract negotiation with the DFT. And they were very complimentary of Dr. Roach again for his open style and for recent improvements in the corporation. It was a very amiable meeting and it was nice to see that kind of bittersweet for, for them and for some of us. Thank you for your work.
He's always been pretty good. Usually. Get it done in one night.
That's the goal. Thank you.
That's the goal for everybody. It's kind of one night, yeah. And with the cause, all right. I just want to compliment the high school, our new people that have been here at so many activities. They're, it's not unusual to see all three of them here, the A.D., the assistant principal, the principal. They're, they're visible, they're set in the, the tone for what we expect, how we expect our children, our students to behave. I think they're, it's gone well. Our students. Our students at the Fall Frenzy too. They handle themselves well. And I love watching the boys play volleyball. Would love to see a boys volleyball team too. All right. Anything else? I have to answer again then. Diane?
I have a. Peter. Hello. My name is Cheyenne. I'm actually a parent of two of the kiddos at the elementary school. Then I say three because my best friend's son is sixth grader and I go on his field trips and whatnot. So I do have a few questions that I'm hoping schools and school boards might be able to help with. So something that I've come across, a few parents have raised concerns about is both schools, is it possible to have something posted on the website of what club sports and everything is available per grade? Because especially if, for example, we have a lot of students coming in right now, so they weren't at back to school night or meet the teacher night. So they're not going to be aware of, okay, well, sixth grade has all of these clubs available. Fourth grade has all of these. Ninth grade has all of these because we weren't at that beginning. And I've noticed, another parent brought up that there's something similar on websites, but it's in four different places and they're not matching up. So I don't know if that's something that can go out on Daleville Community Schools website or maybe the school calendar. One page is the calendar, the second page is, hey, each grade, here are the things that are available in each season. I think that would definitely help with the students getting more involved as well.
Does Miss, does our athletic director send out the, what he sends to? We receive them of, of the activities each week.
Right.
Does he send that out to the parents too?
I'd have to check.
I've seen it on.
We can definitely take a look at organizing that on the website and making that clear and differentiate by grade level and what's available. You have some extracurricular clubs, example, drum club, guitar club, and then some athletic sports that are specific to grade levels.